Recording in progress. Good evening. It is Wednesday, January 17th, and I would like to call this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee to order. We are meeting in the middle school collaborative room, and it is a hybrid meeting in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law. Please be advised that this meeting is being broadcast at a later date over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, and we thank them very much for doing so. If you wish to join this Zoom meeting, the meeting ID is 86530494155. Once again, this meeting will be broadcast at a later date through the local access cable channel and on the public access Facebook page, and will be found on the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. The agenda lists all topics which may be discussed at the meeting and of those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. Would you please rise to meet the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is public comment. The school committee welcomes comments from the public. Comments addressing topics under the scope and authority of the school committee are welcome. Please remember, this is public comment, not discussion, and limit your comments to three minutes. Each public comment section has a maximum of 10 minutes. Comments about individual students are prohibited by state and federal law. We will have another public comment section at the end of this meeting. So is there anyone on the board that would like to make a public comment? Any public comments from anyone here physically? Any public comments from anyone coming in on Zoom? Please raise your hand if you have a comment. All righty, seeing no comments, we will begin with the chair's report. The first item is, we are currently working with the finance committee to schedule our budget meeting with them. They have us scheduled for March 14th. We will have to move our projected public hearing date from March 20th to March 13th in order to comply with their schedule. I need to know if members will be available on the 13th for a meeting. We would then cancel the March 20th meeting. You can let me know by tomorrow at 4:00. Just text me and let me know if you are available on the 13th, and then I can advise the finance committee chair prior to their meeting, which is tomorrow evening.
What time on the 13th?
It would be 6:30.
Okay.
Okay. And that's all I have today because we have a very large topic this evening. So first, we do have review and approve minutes as everyone had a chance to look at the regular session minutes from November 15th. Yes, and Mr. Layton, you're behind me, so I'm going to twist around. Okay, any questions or comments? So then could I ask for a motion to approve them?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
And a second, please? And we have to do a roll call vote because Mr. Layton is attending virtually.
Mr. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Prozowski?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Mr. Stain.
Mr. Skolbrine?
Yes.
And Mrs. Arsham?
Yes. Okay, we also have a line item transfer, and I will let the superintendent to explain that.
Before you this evening is a request to transfer $14,840 from the capital improvement maintenance line to the maintenance of building contracted service line. This is to cover the repair of the middle high school elevator that has been out of service. This request is coming in from Mr. Hedy, and I would recommend approval on this.
Okay, does anyone have any questions on the line item transfer?
Is there a document that outlines this?
It's not in the drive.
It's not in the drive.
Okay.
But I have it physically here for you.
Okay.
We can slide it down. Basically, we got a quote, and that's the cost of the repair to the elevator, $14,840.
Could you just repeat what line we're pulling from?
Yep, there's a line in the budget for capital improvement in the maintenance line. It's annually budgeted with $45,000. So that is fully intact currently, and we would be looking to move the amount of the elevator repair over to the contracted service line for maintenance of buildings.
And these services have already been rendered?
They have not been rendered.
They've not? Okay. I move to make the line item transfer as proposed.
A second?
A second.
All right, and then we need a roll call vote.
Mr. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Prozowski?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mr. Skolbrine?
Yes.
And Mrs. Arsham?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to that repair right away.
Thank you. We also had warrants totaling from January 3rd to January 9th, totaling $187,556.74, which I have signed on. Did anyone have any questions on any of those warrants?
I just have a comment. The cadence that we've been getting on these warrant items is they're appearing in the folder. Typically, the folder is presented to us a day or two in advance, and the warrants are hitting day of, and there really isn't sufficient time to go through the warrants and then to raise a question to you, Madam Chair. Last time around, I did have a couple of questions. Sent them to the superintendent. They were very expeditiously answered, which I will, you know, obviously reserve the opportunity to do that in the future, but there just isn't the... And I don't want to change anybody's job or have anybody do it earlier. Like, it just... We're just not at a point yet where we can have sufficient time to review.
All right, thank you.
Just as a point of information, Liz usually is the one that uploads all of that information for you, and she's been out for the last two days. So there was... Oh.
That's great, huh?
All righty.
Didn't Liz know that she's not allowed to take time off? She's not allowed to be safe, right?
Oh my goodness, okay. All right, so then we're going to move on to the superintendent's. Mr. Layton, since you are behind me, if I don't see you and you're trying to talk, would you just jump in?
I will, thank you.
Okay. We move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. I want to remind everyone one more time that we have opened kindergarten registration for next school year. Pre-K registration will open on March 1st. Our kindergarten readiness meeting for parents is scheduled for January 30th at 6:30 via Zoom. Information regarding this event is posted on our website as well as information about kindergarten and pre-K registration. You can go directly to the main page of the district website. I'd like to provide an update regarding the Director of Finance and Administration position. Been notified that there needs to be a delay in the start date for Ellen Widdemore. As a result, knowing that we're trying to navigate the development of the FY '25 budget, and we are entering into negotiations with the LEA as well as the paraprofessionals union, I really can't delay having some assistance with doing some financial analysis. So we are looking to bring in a consultant to assist with fulfilling that business manager function through the end of the year. Just as a point of information for everyone, some folks might be new to the district since I last gave an overview of how I approach inclement weather. So it might be worthwhile reviewing how I approach the process. Although I love hearing from the students alerting me to the weather forecast and advising me as to road conditions for the following day and their advice as to the decision that should be made, but for the benefit not only of the students, but for all the families in town. So I approach this with the same process every time. Early, early in the morning, my first communications are typically with the Department of Public Works and the Police Department. I look to them to advise me on road conditions. They also, as departments, get different weather forecast information through different resources. So I always check in with them as to what they're seeing in the information that they're getting about their forecast. So they advise me for current road conditions, but also what they anticipate road conditions will be during the day. I then take that information, and my next communication is to the Director of Facilities and his team, the Maintenance and Grounds team here on site, and they can advise me as to current conditions. It's important for me to consult with these folks, both the DPW and our Facilities Department, because they are the ones who are keenly aware, do we have our full complement of trucks to put out on the road? Or do we have some out of service at the moment? Do we have all of our snow removal equipment? Do I have my full complement of staff to get in the vehicles out on the roads or clearing the campus? So they're the ones who can tell me best what they believe their capabilities are to either keep up with a weather event, clear out in time for a delayed opening, get us in good shape for a safe routine dismissal time, et cetera, et cetera. Sometimes the forecast is easy. It's an easy call. If we're getting 18 inches and it's going to snow all day, that's an easy call. When it's maybe going to be changing temperature throughout a period of time, turning over to rain, will it freeze, won't it freeze? Heavy snow for pockets of time? There's any number of things that have to go into consideration here. My responsibility is to educate the children of Lunenburg, and we do that by opening school. If key advisors, experts are advising me that I can do so safely with a safe arrival and a safe dismissal, then that's the decision that I'm going to make. Yesterday, to my knowledge, there were no reports of any bus incidents out on the road or any student driver incidents out on the road. We had safe arrival and safe dismissal back home. It was messy. There was snow. It was slushy. It was not nice. It was not pretty. But we were able to accomplish the mission of getting people in safely and home safely. That said, we do, I do fully understand that we do have some inexperienced drivers who drive their vehicles to school and park here in the lot for the day. Parents, they know their drivers. They know their experience level, their ability level, their confidence behind the wheel. They also know the vehicle that student will be driving. Does it have the safety features that you would like? Is it all-wheel drive? Do we need to replace wearing tires? Lots of factors go into play. If ever a parent feels that I have made a decision that is counter to what they feel the conditions are, if they feel conditions are not safe, they can drive their student to school or, in some cases, they can opt to keep them home. But please be aware that I do carefully consider my responsibility for safe arrival and safe dismissal during any day, any weather event. That's the charge every single day. So while I am always happy to have emails from our students, please know, kids, that I actually do watch the weather. And I'm on top of it. But I'm always happy to hear from them, so we look forward to that. Few reminders for dates coming up in February. February 7th is our next scheduled meeting that will be hybrid from Town Hall at 6:30 PM. Our second meeting that month is off-cycle because of the school vacation week, so the second meeting will be the last week in February, February 28th. That meeting will be hybrid from here at the middle high school, again at 6:30. A reminder that all schools and offices are closed on Monday, February 19th, as we observe President's Day, and that entire week of February 19th, schools are closed for the February school vacation. I can't believe I'm saying that already, February school vacation. So that's what I have for you this evening.
All righty, thank you. Do we have virtually a student representative this evening?
I do not see one.
All right. Then we will continue on to our new business. This evening's new business is a discussion of the proposed FY '25 budget. I wish to, before we begin, I want to remind the school committee of our budget goal. Our goal is to look at the budget through the lens of differentiated instruction, equity, family engagement, and priorities established with the sunsetting SIR funds, particularly continued achievement growth. So that is what our goals are about. So before we start this, I just want to call those to mind. And I'd also like to request that any questions, you jot them down, and they will be answered at the end of the presentation because there is an awful lot of information here, and chances are, some of those questions could very possibly be answered through the presentation.
So at this time, I'd like to invite Annika Scott, our Director of Teaching and Learning, and Juliana Hanscom, our Director of Special Services, to the table. They're going to assist. We're going to hand off to one another different slides to sort of break up the presentation. All righty. So this is where we're at at this moment in time relative to thoughts on next year's budget. I will say that we still have a little bit of work to do. This is not as tight as we typically like to have the initial presentation. There are still some things that we need to sort through and verify. It's taken us a little bit longer because we don't have the benefit of a finance director navigating all of the interconnected spreadsheets that involve our budget process. Come back in. My advance button is not working properly. Every year when we present the budget, we revisit the mission of the Lunenburg Public Schools, and that is to provide all students with the skills, confidence, and passion for lifelong learning so that they may find their own paths to successful careers, active citizenship, and rewarding lives. In our vision, the Lunenburg Public Schools is committed to becoming a leader in education by focusing on its values of attending to the personal well-being of its students, providing high-quality curricula and student-centered instruction for deeper learning at all levels, and promoting the development of attributes and skills necessary for continuous learning for all. Typically next, I take you into an overview of our strategy for continuous improvement, which is integrally connected to the mission and the vision that we just articulated. However, I'd like to take everybody back in time a little bit to provide some context for how we got to where we are right now. When I arrived here in the district, I embarked on an entry plan. It began that July in 2018, and that process was deliberate and mapped out and ongoing throughout the school year, that year. Through the summer, I shared the findings with my leadership team, and by November of 2019, I provided the school committee and the public with a report of findings of that process as well as a proposed strategy for continuous improvement. And it outlined four objectives at that time. To modernize teaching and learning, to create a culture and climate in our schools that is safe, caring, and inclusive, to improve operational efficiencies, including communication, and to ensure that all students are provided equal access to a quality education. Four months later, March 2020, the world shut down. Then came the COVID grants, SIR I, SIR II, SIR III. Those grants were targeted to address the impacts of COVID, specifically connected to any supplies and materials that we may need to safely operate our schools as well as closing any academic learning gaps and addressing behavioral health, mental health. The targets and priorities of the COVID grants aligned with all of the things that we had already identified that we needed to be working on. So we used those COVID grants to address those COVID-related concerns, and at the same time, we were addressing the concerns that had been identified for targeted work. In that school year, we had those four objective areas in the strategy for improvement. Where we are now, we have worked diligently to address all of those areas, and we have narrowed our focus now to this one continuing area where everything now collides. We continue to work to create a culture that values data use, fosters continuous learning in a climate that is safe, caring, inclusive, and reflective of our core values. Back in FY '19, when I first arrived in the district, we had no curriculum leadership beyond high school department heads. We had no district-adopted, standards-aligned, rigorous-on-grade-level curriculum in any of our content areas, K-8. We had no district benchmark assessments in literacy or math. We had no data to determine need for intervention. We had no intervention model for academics. We had no referral process for intervention. And at the time, we had no or very limited common planning time for teachers. In the realm of behavioral health, we had no district-wide Tier One SEL curriculum. At the time, we had one social worker in the entire district located here at the high school. We had six guidance counselors across the district at that time. We had no intervention model for behavioral health, and we had no referral model for interventions in behavioral health as well. I think it's important to note that at this same time, physicians that are very connected to both academic and behavioral health supports for students, we had four principals, one at each school. We had two assistant principals. They were shared across schools. One shared between the primary and Turkey Hill, one shared at the middle and the high school. Today, we do have curriculum leadership. That includes a Director of Teaching and Learning. We've had a Title I coordinator. We have literacy, math, and co-teaching coaches. And we still have our high school department. For a time in recent years, we also had teacher leaders serving as assistant curriculum coordinators in our work. The district has adopted standards-aligned, rigorous-on-grade-level curriculum in ELA or literacy, K through 8, math, K through 5. And this year, we're piloting a math curriculum for adoption, grades 6 through 8. We do have district benchmark assessments in literacy and math. We do have data to determine a need for intervention. We do have an intervention model for academics. We do have a referral process in place for that intervention process. And we have increased common planning time. Relative to behavioral health, we have now adopted a district-wide Tier One, that's all students, SEL curriculum, Trails to Wellness. We have five social workers or adjustment counselor licenses. We have six guidance counselors still, two behavioral health staff at the primary school in the Turkey Hill. Each building has two primary health staff, behavioral health staff. We have three behavioral health staff, guidance counselor, social worker at the middle school. We have four at the high school. One social worker, three guidance counselors. We do have an intervention model for behavioral health and a referral model for that intervention. I always provide in these presentations data for some context. We always include some information relative to enrollment and class size. Our enrollment overall is holding fairly steady. Our class sizes largely across the district for several years have remained consistent in this range. At the primary school, in grades K through 2, we're looking anywhere between 21 in a classroom or 24 in a classroom. At the Turkey Hill, grades 3 through 5, we're looking at a range from 22 to 25 students in a classroom. At the middle school, we range from 20 to 22 on average. And at the high school, because it's so much more complicated, electives, choices, conflicts with schedule placement in one elective versus another, and so on and so forth, there's a wide range of both average class sizes, which really, if you look strictly at the average class sizes, they are lower than the average class sizes of any of our K-8 classrooms. But you can see, because we included the ranges, in one class you may have three, but in a in one class you may have three, but in another class you may have twenty-five. We have provided information on homeschool in the past. Currently, we have thirty-seven students who live in Lunenburg who have approved homeschool plans. And we're still looking to confirm a plan for fourteen others. A little bit of information on accountability rating and national ranking. Our accountability rating is determined through a formula by the Department of Education, MCAS data growth and achievement data factor into that. We were quite pleased this year to see a really good jump for the Turkey Hill Elementary School. A year ago, we were looking at a percentile ranking or accountability ranking of thirty-five. This year, we sit at fifty-one. So that's a testament to all the hard work of the staff and the administration at the Turkey Hill. Call to your attention, Lunenburg High School. This year, we slipped a little bit in our accountability ranking, falling in at the sixty-third percentile. Not really concerned about that at the moment, but we just need to be mindful that some of the decisions we make will potentially have some impact here as well. Some other great news to celebrate about our high school. Lunenburg High School, according to U.S. News and World Report, we, in the national ranking, are number one thousand eight hundred and thirty-six. However, in Massachusetts high schools, we're ranking at sixty-seven. And in Worcester County, this metro area high schools, we are twelve. Our scorecard, given an eighty-nine point six-two. We have forty-eight percent of students passing at, or taking at least one AP exam, and forty-two of them passing at least that one AP exam. Math proficiency at seventy-eight percent, reading proficiency at eighty-four percent, science proficiency at ninety-eight percent, and our graduation rate at ninety-seven percent. So again, testament to all of the hard work of the administration and faculty at the high school. Some additional information. We provide a full report on our MCAS results every year in October. I'll turn it over here to Mrs. Scott to make comment.
Thank you. So here you're seeing a slide of our spring 2023 MCAS data. We always say that MCAS is only one measure, as is I Ready and any of our module assessment data or even classroom data. We're trying to look at a picture of the whole child academically and in other areas. Particularly with MCAS, we are above state average in meeting and exceeding in eleven grade-level content areas from grade six through twelve, but still below or at state average in meeting and exceeding in six grade-level content areas, K six. So that's certainly a concern, measuring against the state is one measure. We also consider the percentage of students who are meeting the standards, fully meeting the standards, not partially. So if you look, you know, again, there's a range, but thirty-five to sixty-five percent of total students at each grade level meeting expectations. So that means thirty-five to sixty-five are not. Having said that, in the high school for, you know, you must pass the ELA in math, MCAS, and science in order to graduate, and they allow you to include the partially meeting expectations. So we are in the mid to high nineties with math and ELA ninety-eight percent, ninety-five percent, I think, with students passing the MCAS in order to graduate. So that's excellent. But again, we're really focusing on getting our students to meet the standards.
So a little bit now on some national and district testing data.
Sure. In addition to MCAS, we currently utilize a variety of assessments, including I Ready in reading and math. You may have seen us present, we present on that in the fall, winter, and spring. We are wrapping up our I Ready testing first winter right now, and we'll be presenting that soon. We use DIBL's literacy assessment across the board in K two and for select students, three and up. We collect HMH module assessment data for reading and math. We use the Forefront Universal Screener for number sense at the younger grades to assess. And then this year, we also started using the ESGI kindergarten assessments as progress monitoring benchmarks for students. You'll see here our AP data. I know, you know, there's concern around AP classes. You'll see a list here of our AP classes. We're really proud of the excellent work of the high school teachers and students getting a mean scores, looking really great in comparison to the state, which again is one measure. We will be able to offer all current AP classes again, even with the proposed cut that we're going to talk about tonight. Then on the right-hand side is a snapshot of our I Ready data that we presented in the spring. Again, we're currently working on a two-year goal to get eighty percent of students on or above grade level in reading and math. We did see in the spring some large gains in foundational skills, but we're looking to continue to get more and more of our students on or above grade level.
So now we will cover some data relative to special services. Much of this data we have presented in recent years when we present the budget. I'll turn it over now to Mrs. Hansman.
So on this slide, you can see each of the schools and the number of students that we have on IEPs, as well as the number of evaluations that have been done throughout the year in 2023 and 2024. So we've got about a hundred and ten evals so far that we have done or that will be done by the end of the year. Those are reevals and initials up to this point. There may be some more initials that come from now to the end of the year. But we roughly have two hundred and fifty students, two hundred and fifty-five on IEPs currently. So when you think about that, think about the context of there are always a number of evals usually per each evaluation. This counts just, those twenty-nine are the number of students that have been evaluated. So each of those students could have had four, five, six measures, or six different faculty, special education staff, testing them. And then you have to have meetings for each of them. So out of those two hundred and fifty-five students, there could be four hundred-plus meetings a year, depending on if you meet once or twice. So that's where you look at the people that are sitting around those tables usually at an IEP meeting, and then the administrators that have to facilitate those meetings along with teachers.
Can I ask a question?
Yep, quick.
What's ACE program?
The ACE program is our eighteen-to-twenty-two-year-old program.
Got it, okay.
Excuse me, Chair, caution button. Is it locked? Yeah, like a little closer.
Is it, do we have to push the button?
You don't have to push it, it's green.
Is it green now? Yeah, it is green. Oh, now it's green. Is that better, Brian?
Thank you.
Okay. This one talks to our Section 504s. So those are students who have a disability but do not necessarily need specialized instruction, but they need accommodations in the classroom. And so with that, you can see that we currently have a hundred and sixty-one students that qualify for a 504 plan. Last year, we had a hundred and forty-three. And with that, the 504 coordinators in each of the buildings are the assistant principals. Behavioral health data, we also wanted to pull some data just so you had an idea as to what some of this looks like while we're making some of these decisions and the impacts of them. So with this slide right here, these are the behavioral health support teams, meetings that have happened so far during the year. I believe it's up to October, no, as of January. So you can see, and then you can see how many in FY23 and FY22. So these are meetings that might be held for students that staff feel are having a crisis or have some things that need to be talked about to help with their behavior or behavioral health. This slide represents our Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three supports, and also those that might get Tier Two and Three. And we broke that down. I don't believe in the past we've necessarily had the Tier One in there. So I like that it shows that now so that you can see the number, and those are the number of students that are in the buildings that guidance counselors are responsible for, for working with them as well. So you can see that too. Our board-certified BCBA's, their caseloads, you can see we've got data going back to twenty-one and where each of those, so we have a BCBA that works with primary school and Turkey Hill, and then we have another BCBA that's the middle school, high school, and out of districts as well. And so you can see their caseloads over the years and how it has increased in the services they provide for students and support for staff as well. The behavioral health crisis, so you know, there are a lot of factors that go into these. And I can tell you for the Section 12s, those, we've only had one in the last two years, which is a great thing. The hospitalizations, so I was talking with the school psychologist today, and I just want to reiterate that there are multiple tiers in a hospitalization. There could be just a trip to the emergency room, there could be a partial hospitalization, there could be a full hospitalization. These numbers right here represent only the ones that get to that, that have risen to that level to where I'm going to get a notice from the hospital saying that those students need tutoring. And so I have to sign off to say that Learn Well is the agency that a lot of the hospitals use, will provide tutoring for those students. So although there are these numbers here, we have far more students who have been in crisis throughout the years. These are, like I said, these are only our top tier. Interesting to note, I was happy when I first looked at this slide. I'm like, oh, we only have four students so far this year that have required the hospital tutoring forms. And then I had my administrative assistant delve down a little bit further and give me some dates for the 2022 and 23 data. And so you can see up to this point last year, there were only four as well. And then we had twelve more students who required that tutoring in the hospital from January twelfth to May, to May thirtieth. So I've given my school site, I met with them today. I said, please, just know this may be coming. I hope it doesn't, I hope we don't follow the same path that we did last year. But this just shows the crisis that some of our students have been in over the past couple of years. And these are our grants. Most of these are entitlement grants, some are ones that, the ones on the right, I believe, are more of the ones that you've had to go after, correct?
Yes, competitive grants.
The competitive grants, right.
And I also wanted to point out that the grants on the right, many of them are multi-year grants. So we're showing what the amount is for FY24 here, but we've taken advantage of some of them for multiple years.
And I just want to make mention that it's these grants that have allowed us to adopt and purchase the curricula that we have over the last two years. All right, so FY25 budget development. Again, the chair articulated earlier that the priorities this year are around making sure that we are focused on differentiated instruction, equity, family engagement as priorities for resource allocation. Every year, I work with my administrative team, and we go through a process. This year was very different because we were alerted early on in October that we were looking at a ten percent increase in health insurance. That was a game changer. We had been preparing for two and a half years to make difficult decisions about cuts, knowing that the S R monies were going to go. We were ready. And then we got a couple of whammies thrown in our direction. So let me tell you about those. These are the factors that are underlying the need for us to make reductions for next year's budget in order to hit that two and a half percent target that the town manager always gives us, that two and a half percent increase. Round numbers here. Loss of the COVID funding, largely used to staff positions. The health insurance increase at ten percent has a price tag in excess of half a million. Then there are contractual increases that we see every year, prices go up annually. We know our bus transportation increases year to year. We saw a pretty good increase in our special ed transportation projection for next year. Utility costs increase, et cetera, et cetera. If we were here preparing a budget, looking at any one of these bubbles as a single impact to our budget, we would be making cuts, but we would be able to navigate those cuts in a way that maintains the integrity of much of what we've put in place over the last handful of years. We are not looking at just one of these factors. We, in this budget cycle, are being hit by three significant impacts. So we know that people in the public have said over years, you better be ready, make those S R cuts. Yep, we know we're going to have to make them. So let's take a look at those first. These are the positions that have been funded this year, paid out of S R. In the budget that you have before you this evening, every single one of them is eliminated or a different position eliminated in its place. So as an example, one of our instructional coaches was funded out of S R. We are going to lose one instructional coach. We have an intervention teacher at Turkey Hill. That position will be lost. A classroom teacher position at the middle school, that position will be lost. We added a classroom teacher for math at the high school, that position will be lost. Guidance counselor at the middle school, guidance counselor at the high school, both funded out of S R, those positions will be lost. The social worker positions at the Turkey Hill and the middle school. I've been saying this publicly for quite some time. I am going to prioritize keeping a clinical counselor license over a guidance counselor license. These positions, they are all part of the teacher's contract. So there's no financial benefit one over the other. They're all governed by that contract. It's the license and their training and their capabilities. Social workers or adjustment counselor licenses are clinical background. They bring something that your typical guidance counselor license does not bring. So in these cases, rather than eliminate the social worker positions, we have in the local budget, guidance counselor positions. We are opting to eliminate the guidance counselor positions and move those social worker positions into the budget. We have had four MTSS or intervention tutors helping kiddos that are lagging behind academically. Two of them are at the Turkey Hill, two of them are at the primary school. We are proposing that we move them to be funded out of the Title One grant next year so that we can maintain some intervention staffing in both of those buildings. More on that later. So again, we just talked about the pink bubble. But we still have to deal with the yellow and the green bubble. So where we are right now, and again, we still need to consider some things. I still need to look closely at some things. This is not a rock-solid number where I would like to be able to present. This is steady Eddie, I know what I've got here, and I'm solid with what I've got here. Here, you can see that we're still above. Here you can see that we're still above that two and a half percent target. So we'll talk more about that. In this budget, we're, we're, you know, rolling forward with level funding for Chapter 70, rolling in all of our contractual increases for our staff. Factoring in a health insurance increase at 10%. And accounting for the increases to transportation, both general ed, that's our big yellow buses, and our special ed transportation, as well as increases in utility costs, largely electricity. We have taken a look and we are going to continue to take a look more closely at the non-personnel lines in the budget. In this budget, we have already level funded or reduced most of the expense lines, with the exception of those areas that we know are increasing and that we have to comply with those increases. We are looking at potentially eliminating subscription services that teachers use in the classroom. Power School HR module is something that we've been working on to load all of our information in and roll out with staff. It's all in Power School. Our onboarding, our offboarding of new, new staff. Tracking of credits, accrual time. Teachers would have access, all staff would have access to go in and monitor where they're at, rather than calling Liz Peterson and asking her to look through files and records and get information for them. This was an efficiency move. We may have to abandon. SMOR is that platform that we've been using district wide for all of our newsletters, the principal, myself. Care Solus is that referral service that we've been paying for. This is a service that can work directly with students and their families and get them connected with mental health care that aligns with their health insurance. We have done an awful lot of work via Zoom. We are having almost all of our IDP meetings via Zoom. It's convenient for parents, they don't have to leave their workplace. They can hop on a meeting, attend, participate, and then log off and be right back at work. We're looking to reduce the number of licenses we have to save some costs there. We don't have an IT director. We have, for the last few years, contracted consultants to fill that IT management function for us. This year we're, we're contracted with Custom Computer Specialists. Our contract with them has them onsite two days a week. We would be looking to reduce that to one day a week to save some costs there. And we're also taking a look at the, the library databases that, that we have here at school. We suspect that some of them are also available through our public library. So if that is the case, our students can access those databases even remotely if they have a library card. And then we could potentially save some, some costs there without negatively impacting our students and our program.
Can I ask a quick clarification question? The iReady My Path, grade six through eight, is that all of iReady for grade six through eight? Or is that a specialized?
It's the personalized learning platform, it's not the assessment platform.
Okay.
So these are contemplated personnel reductions. They say contemplated because there are some things in here. There are positions in here that are not included in this budget currently. However, they were discussed and taken off the table at this time. That does not mean that at some point if we need to, in order to meet that target, add cuts, maybe some of those things come back on for discussion. I felt it was important to lay out for everyone all of the things that we looked at and have talked about over these last three plus months. Because if I only present the things that ultimately we decided to put on the table for cuts, people are going to come and say, well, why don't you look at cutting that instead? Why don't you look at cutting something else or cut that thing or that program or that staff position? We have looked at an awful lot. And we are trying to maintain the integrity of our tier one classroom instruction, keeping that solid, growing our capacity in the classroom to differentiate instruction, meet the needs of students. We also think about the day-to-day operation of the building. And quite frankly, in the past, we have been understaffed to the point that it feeds a vibe in the building. Administrators are running from one end of the day to the next, putting out fires that are popping all day long. That is a vibe in the building. It's not calm, stable, steady. It's more frantic. So we think about the impact of these cuts to the feel of the building, day to day, for staff and for students. So we'll look at this school by school. Right now, we're looking at cutting one teacher from the history department. Obviously, with any of the cuts, class sizes are going to go up. I'm not looking to minimize this. The nature of a high school schedule, you can't say 25 in period A, 25 in period B. It doesn't work that way. There will be classes that will have more than 25 students. There will be classes that may approach 30 or even exceed 30. There may be classes that are at 20. It's the nature of high school, it's the nature of the schedule. Students have choices and options. It's not nice and neat, we can't control it the way we can the other grade levels. So I don't mean to gloss over these things, there is an impact here. Class sizes will increase. And elective offerings will be reduced. I think it's important to point out though, that over the last handful of years, there were positions that were added. This is a position that we added actually this year. In the English department, we're looking to cut one FTE, one teacher. Again, class sizes would increase, that average class size would be about 21. Again, elective offerings would be reduced. It's, I think noteworthy here, that when we hired the additional full-time history teacher, that allowed us to move one of our teachers who is duly licensed in history and English and has for really my entire tenure here, taught classes in both departments. Because we were able to hire a full history teacher this year, we were able to move this teacher fully over into the English department, which really bumped up the total number of FTEs, not by a full position, but it did bump up the number of FTEs in English. A math teacher, again, class size is going to go up. Electives are going to be reduced and there aren't a whole lot of math electives. So there might be actually an elimination of a math elective, potentially the math skills building class. Again, a math teacher position was added to the high school. So this cut returns us to pre-pandemic staffing level. Science teachers, we're looking to cut one. The science department has always had at least one more full-time position than the other departments. We offer an awful lot of science electives, which is great for kids. Cutting here, again, class size potentially is increasing and electives are definitely going to be reduced. One of the things that has been suggested or recommended as a possible or reduction in terms of electives would be closing the greenhouse and eliminating the horticulture classes. While I'm open to considering all possible options at this point, this is not something that the administration is ready to endorse as the outcome for the loss of this position. There are many other electives in the science department that we can look at as well. It's important to note here, math teachers are licensed in math, English teachers are licensed in English, science teachers are licensed in biology, chemistry, physics. If you're going to teach physics, you need to be licensed in physics. So cuts in this department become a little bit more tricky because we have to offer certain core science courses. And we need to be sure that we have the proper licenses on staff to be able to do that. We did hire an intervention teacher for the high school. We're going to cut that position. I'm going to let Mrs. Hanson talk a little bit about this one because this involves students and programs relative to special education.
So we had hired that intervention teacher. I think, Tim, you had actually looked at bringing that on board because there was a need in the general ed population for kind of an in-between for students that were struggling, but they weren't special education, so then sometimes it'd fall between the cracks. So it was great being able to have this intervention teacher come on board to work with those students without having the need of being in a specialized special education program. But when we're looking at the numbers and we're talking about this type of budget, we were looking to try to get creative. So what our proposal is, is to merge the intervention for next year, is to merge the, that intervention teacher program with our TLC program, which our TLC program is the program that we've had, we brought it on board, boy, nine years ago now, possibly in 10. That program services primarily mental health needs for students, general ed and special ed. Can be in that TLC program along with students who are coming back from hospitalizations, who have, it started out with students who were school phobic. Also students that might be coming back that have concussions were in that TLC program for, you know, it was more of a short term. So the thought is, is merging those two programs now, having one teacher with that, with the possibility of having a paraprofessional because the class size will increase for that program. To be able to service the needs of both special ed and general ed students that fall into those categories.
So again, an elimination of this position takes us back to teacher staffing levels. Although merging this and being able to adequately provide some individualized attention to the kiddos that would be in this program, in and out of this program, we would be looking to assign a paraprofessional to this teacher to support.
How are the intervention teachers licensed?
They're licensed in other areas, there is no intervention license. The teacher that we hired is licensed in special education. World language, we looked at the potential for cutting one FTE in world language. It's not included in this budget at this time. When the department looked at it, they felt that the reduction of one FTE would mean that they would have to discontinue offering world language at the eighth grade level. The challenge with that is though, that if it's not offered as year one of the language in eighth grade, then you have to create year one of the language offered at the high school. And if kids are entering year one of a language in ninth grade, the potential for them to advance through up to our AP level language class or our fifth year language class, because we have had some that have done that, that would be impacted. Additionally, we would have to figure out what's going to fill the void that's left by not offering language at the middle school, which then becomes a staffing challenge. So at this time, at least this version of a proposal for a cut, we, we've tabled. We're, we're not including that in this budget at this time. We can certainly have more conversation about what a cut might look like other than elimination of eighth grade, foreign language, world language. But at this time, this is sitting off the table. Reducing the music teacher position at the high school by four tenths. So as an example, if you're a high school teacher, you're a 1.0 full-time equivalent, you teach five classes. So to reduce a teacher by point four, you're taking a teacher who did teach five classes and now they're only going to teach three. By reducing the, the staff position here, music elective offerings would be reduced, but we gave you some data relative to the numbers of students opting to enroll in those music electives and the numbers are very low. So we don't think that it's going to have a significant impact in terms of kids won't be able to access the areas that they want to access for electives. We still think we should be able to meet that level of need and interest. Of course, that can change over time and we revisit this every year. But for now, based on the information that we have, we think that we can make this reduction and still provide music electives for students who are interested in that. We would still be offering band and chorus. And the challenge, you know, like I said earlier, we added to our music FTEs at the Turkey Hill in an attempt to offer band and chorus targeted to rebuild interest and rebuild participation in the band and chorus programs. It took a really big hit during COVID because there were so many health restrictions that, you know, we lost kids opting to pursue it. So we have, for the last two years, been intent on trying to rebuild the level of that program. It's just going to take us a little while longer. Physical education teacher, again, this is based on class sizes that we had seen previously. This would increase class size for phys ed class. It would potentially increase class size for other electives because there wouldn't be as many phys ed electives available for the kids. We'd be looking to combine potentially the ninth grade PE, which is dedicated right now, combine it with the 10th grade. Again, elective offerings are going to be decreased. This is a cut I am not 100% confident that we can make as a full one FTE cut. What's complicating at the middle high school level is the schedule again, and meeting graduation requirements. And can we offer enough to have kids land where they need to land in order to get their credits? We actually have to start mocking up a schedule to see what we can actually make work. Based solely looking at numbers, it looks like it's potentially viable, but it may not in the end actually be a viable cut, at least not as a full 1.0. So we're going to continue to work on this and fine tune that. Guidance counselors at the high school level, we're going to reduce by a half. Pre-COVID, and you'll see this on the middle school slides as well. Pre-COVID, we had one and a half guidance counselors at the middle school. The other half was at the high school and there were two of their counselors at the high school. So high school had two and a half guidance counselors, middle school had one and a half. We would be returning to that level of staffing. Again, we've been intentional in trying, and Mr. Santri has done a fantastic job. You know, he's made some staffing moves in guidance. He's been trying to build the climate and culture in the guidance office that we want to see building wide in all of our buildings. This is an important support at the high school level in terms of guiding kids through their scheduling, selecting their electives, making sure that they're meeting all of their required credits, the transition off to college, applying for loans, the FAFSA for financial aid, on and on. Our guidance counselors are the ones at the high school that are going into advisory blocks and delivering those SEL Trails to Wellness lessons. This will have some impact to that and we're going to have to sort of reassess what we're doing. Guidance is also responsible for organizing and scheduling all of the different kinds of testing, AP testing, PSAT testing, the ASPF, the MCAS testing. So any reduction there is going to mean a shift in burden. Custodial staffing, believe we potentially have four custodial staff at the high school. We'd be looking to take a full-time night shift and potentially reduce that to a part-time. If there's a reduction here at all, responsibilities of the custodial staff are going to have to be reduced. We're going to have to be more thoughtful and critical about what assignments they have for cleaning. And some is going to have to be absorbed day shift full-time or by others night shift full-time. If we have callouts with reduced staffing, then we're down to identifying critical need of things that need to be cleaned with a reduced level of staffing, either first shift or second shift. Our ability to maintain the cleanliness of this entire building that is in use constantly is going to be challenged. So if when we fine tune some of these cuts and get more honed in on an actual number to hit that target, potentially we take this off. But for right now, it's all. We also talked about, was there a way to reduce the librarian? The librarian services both the middle and the high school. If we saw a reduction there, there may be fewer classes that that position would be able to teach for the middle school. There would be less opportunity for her to be providing direct instruction around research-based work in their history classes, in their English classes. If we don't have someone staffing the library, potentially it's closed and students don't have access to go in and take reading material. And we also, in the last NEASC accreditation visit, they flagged and they wanted to see even more staff in our library. So for now, while we discussed this possibility, again, it's off the table. Now I'm going to bridge between high school and middle school by touching on some middle school, high school athletics because we do have middle school athletics in addition to our high school programs. One of the potential cuts is moving away from a dedicated full-time athletic director. Potentially now that means that an administrator at the middle high school is picking it up for a stipend in addition to their admin role. If we see a reduction in the athletic director position at all, whether it's eliminating a full-time, reducing it to a half-time, assigning it as a stipend to someone else, I think our capacity to run both a middle school athletic program with multiple sports, coordinate game schedules, reschedules, transportation, on and on, is too much if this position is reduced in any way. I will say that as I was arriving in the district, a decision had already been made to move to a full-time athletic director position and not one that was a part-time teacher slash coach slash AD. Because at the time, the frustration for athletes and their families was around timeliness of communication, accountability for coaches and for student behavior. We fell short of what the community's expectations were for our athletic programming. We're going to go back to that as an impact with any level of reduction here. And I think it's also important to note that MIAA has meetings with athletic directors during the school day and for a variety of reasons. Season scheduling, playoff schedules, tournament information, rules and regulation changes. Those meetings take place during the school day. So there's going to be some impact to a change, any change there.
So are you recommending this or not?
Right now, yes. It's in this budget. I think if we want to revisit and reprioritize and I'm happy to go back and rework some other potential options, I will look for some input from the committee when we get to the end of the presentation. Couple of years ago, we hired a full-time athletic trainer. This is also a cut that's here on the table. MIAA has some requirements for varsity and JV relative to football and hockey. For football, all home and away games need to have coverage by medical personnel. Each team needs to provide their own dedicated person. So it's not enough to have one at the game to support both sides. Things that qualify here are athletic trainers, nurse practitioners and doctors. They are undecided. There is disagreement as to whether or not EMTs qualify and that has to do with complications based on what they are allowed to do, not allowed to do liability insurance, so on and so forth. Hockey games require home coverage. And if there's not a medical professional and a game administrator present at either a football or a hockey game, the game is forfeited. We have to have an administrator from the school there. We have to have a medical person there. Additionally, since we brought the athletic trainer on, in our fitness room, he's been able to offer all students and I think even staff take advantage from time to time of strength and conditioning plans, post-surgery rehab, injury maintenance and prevention and getting all the kids that are student athletes back out to play post-treatment.
When did we add the athletic trainer position?
This is year two? I think this is year two. This is the second year we have a full-time position.
And before it was on a contract basis as needed for games?
The requirements changed.
Okay.
So we're not required to have a full-time athletic trainer?
We are required to have him at games.
Right, very specific types of games. We also took a look at the athletic department part-time secretary position. If there was a cut here, any of those clerical responsibilities would have to be absorbed by other secretaries in the main office at the middle high school and some of them would also revert back over to central office staff. If the AD position is cut, I'm going to advocate that this position needs to stay because if you've got somebody part-time or taking it on as an added stipended function, you are going to need a dedicated secretary to make the calls, to reschedule games, contact the bus company for transportation changes, so on and so forth. We absolutely will have to have it if we have anything less than a full-time athletic director. That said, if we maintain a full-time athletic director, the athletic director would have to absorb the functions that are currently being provided by the secretary. So I'm not recommending all three of these cuts in their entirety. And I want to make note that the part-time secretary's position is not funded in a line in the local budget. It's funded out of the revolving account. However, if that position were not there, then the monies that go to the salary of that part-time position could potentially then go to a different position in the athletic department. So again, interested to hear what the committee thinks about what moves they don't want to entertain at this point relative to our athletic programming. And again, cuts here mean that we're eliminating middle school athletics. That said, the vast majority of what we offer, there are youth organizations here in town. Students will still have opportunities to play the sports that they love to play. Except for field hockey, there's no youth field hockey in town. All right, now transition on to the middle school. Based on current student enrollment at each grade level, we believe that we can reduce the classroom teaching staff at the middle school by one. Obviously, that's going to have some impact with class sizes. We think that based on numbers at different grade levels, we can reassign a teacher at one grade level to help with the bubble class coming up to sixth grade and so on. But we believe that we can navigate one classroom teacher cut without a significant negative impact here. We did have some discussion about the possibility of cutting the technology teacher at the middle school. But then what would replace that? Currently, the technology position assists our science teachers in covering some of the science engineering technology standards. So those would have to go back to our science teachers to cover. So for now, this position is off the table. And again, we already talked about this on the high school side of the house, but we're reducing the guidance positions back to the staffing levels that we had prior. Except pre-COVID, we had one full-time guidance license position and a half-time, the other half at the high school, guidance license position. We're looking to keep the full-time position as a social worker adjustment counselor license. We're going back to the 1.5 staffing, but we're opting to retain the social worker license over the guidance license. Again, same reason, they have clinical training and background that is beneficial for what we need for meeting our kids' needs.
So just for clarity, it may have had something to do with your annotation on a previous slide. For the guidance counselors that I think you were talking about in an earlier slide where you're reducing to 2.5, that was for the high school? And this reduction of 1.5 is to the middle school?
Correct.
Okay. There's an annotation problem at the bottom of the slide. In the previous slide, you had LMS and it was LHS.
I will correct that.
Just a little bit disoriented.
And repost.
Okay, got it.
Thank you. All right, so on to Turkey Hill. We would be reducing one classroom teacher. Currently, the fifth grade is a bubble class. There are six classes that have followed with this class all the way up. Because we have some flexibility and availability with staffing at the middle school, we're eliminating this teacher position. This is not going to have an impact on class sizes at Turkey Hill. This added position is just not moving up to the middle school. We have had a dedicated Wilson reading teacher position. Wilson reading is a very specific and scripted reading intervention that addresses a specific kind of reading disability or gap. There are many other types of reading intervention. It's just that in this district largely, historically, we have defaulted to reading through Wilson reading.
Well, prior to our new curriculum, there wasn't really another good research-based, science-based method.
Right.
For students.
Are we speaking to a mic on that one?
Sorry, Brian.
Is it green?
It's green now. So what I was saying, Brian, is that prior to our new HMH curriculum, there wasn't many other options besides the Wilson program we had for that very specific reading. Now with HMH and a few other programs that we have now that we've brought on board for all students, we have the ability to be able to dive down to the specific areas of reading where children are having difficulties and teach those lessons and help build those skills up before they get to where they have a big enough gap to qualify for special education and then to qualify for the Wilson reading.
Do we have to pay a licensing fee for using the Wilson reading?
We did have to get staff trained. So there was a fee that went along with it.
For the training and?
For the training, yes.
So we will continue to have staff who are trained. We just won't have a dedicated teacher position for it. We added an intervention teacher at Turkey Hill. We would be eliminating this position. And I'll speak more about the intervention model that we have had in place and what that's going to look like with cuts. We are also going to reduce by half the physical education teacher position at Turkey Hill. This year's budget has a full-time phys ed teacher at Turkey Hill and a full-time phys ed teacher at the primary school. What we're going to do is follow the same model that we have with all of the other unified arts. Teachers are shared across the two schools. So we're going to go from two phys ed teachers to one, split between the two. The music teacher position at Turkey Hill, a couple of years ago, we did bump up the FTEs to this position to have that dedicated band chorus offering at Turkey Hill to sort of rebuild our programs at the middle high school. We're going to cut that back to what it was prior, which is a half-time position. It's just going to take us, again, a little bit longer to rebuild our program. Currently, there is a full-time guidance counselor and a full-time social worker at Turkey Hill. Currently, there is a full-time guidance counselor and a full-time social worker at Turkey Hill. This was the cut we talked about earlier when we were talking about eliminating the S.R.-funded positions. The guidance counselor position would be eliminated in order to keep the social worker position. But you can see the impacts here at this level. The guidance counselor is providing SEL instruction with the Trails to Wellness curriculum as a class in our schedule, our specials rotation, our unified arts rotation. So art, music, SEL. So we would lose that and the schedule will have to be adjusted. She's also servicing students directly through group counseling sessions, check-ins with some kiddos, helping out with kiddos in crisis. Much of the check-in type things that she is fulfilling at this time really are going to default to the administration to continue. Because the remaining social worker is really going to have to provide services to kids that are in a higher level of need. We did put the social worker position on here. We did talk briefly about the potential of going from one social worker at each school full-time to a shared social worker across the two. But they are filling such an important need at both of these buildings right now. The principals felt strongly we needed to take this off the table. There's also a part-time secretary. It's not even really a half-time position. It's more in the realm of 10, 12 hours a week. Part-time secretary position at Turkey Hill would be eliminated. Those responsibilities would have to be absorbed by the secretary. Or now that we're post-COVID, we can look to bring in some of our senior tax work-off volunteers and train them to do some of the things that we have been doing. Or again, not having COVID restrictions for health and safety in the building at this point, looking to have parent volunteers come in as well. Part-time custodian position. Currently, there's a full-time on day, a full-time on night, and a part-time on night. We would be looking to reduce the part-time position, which would leave a full-time during the day and a full-time second shift. Again, responsibilities of that additional staffer are going to have to fall to the two remaining custodians. Again, if there's absence on either shift, we're going to have to be down to identifying critical need that has to be executed with the short staffing. And again, late fall through the winter months, second shift staffing can present a challenge because our buildings, our gyms are used by the youth basketball week. So that's going to present some extra challenge for us to make sure that we can get somebody over there and keep the building open so that our facility renters will still have access to the building. Library, I mean, the Lunenburg Primary School. Again, the social worker adjustment counselor. Currently, there are two positions occupied by the social worker adjustment counselor license. We would be cutting to have one. The other building has a social worker and a guidance. Based on the different kinds of needs at the primary level, we opted to look to hire two social workers at that level, make sure that we intervene and provide supports for families, get them connected to supports that they need to get them off on a solid footing early in their time here with the schools. So we'd be going from two positions to one. Also, eliminating a classroom teacher position. You may recall, we used to have six kindergarten classes. But there was a year that we only had 100 registered for kindergarten. But the moving up kindergarten class to first grade, they were really impacted by COVID. The developmental appropriate, knowing how to be in school, struggling some academically, socially, emotionally. So at the time, Principal Adams asked if we could move that FTE up and keep the class size small with that group of students to help close some of those gaps for them. And it followed with them up to second grade where they are now. For class size numbers, this is not a needed position. We can eliminate this and still maintain class sizes 25 or under based on our current enrollment and maybe some wiggle room for some move-ins with the elimination of this position.
What will the class size for this current second grade class look like next year when they're in third grade?
What's the total number of kids in second grade right now?
It's 23, but it's like 24, 20, 24 kids have lost.
It's on the Turkey Hill.
Yeah, we'd have to go back in the slides.
Okay.
Because it was a good way back. We can go back and get that number.
I'll get it.
We also added an intervention teacher position at the primary. This position would also be gone. Again, this is the same the same split that we saw when I explained what was happening with phys ed at the Turkey Hill. Again, there's a part-time secretary position at the primary school. That position would be eliminated. Again, we'd be looking to get some help through volunteers or the senior work-off program volunteers. And the secretary would have to absorb those functions that are currently filled by that part-time secretary. And again, here, we have a full-time custodian day shift. We have a full-time custodian night shift and a part-time. We would be looking to eliminate the part-time. The same impacts are here. Again, this slide is on here for the primary as well because again, we did have discussion about the possibility of having one shared social worker support both schools. And again, we decided to take that off the table. So looking at the district level, we added a secretary position to central office. That was the position to handle central registration. So when new folks move into Lunenburg, rather than having a student at the middle school and one at Turkey Hill and another at the primary, having to go to each of those three locations to register their children, coming to one location to register all of their children, that was realized with this position. This position also took on the responsibility of transportation matters, getting kids changed on bus routes, added, taken off, so on and so forth. Additionally, this position was going to be scheduling all of our IEP meetings. Remember the 255 students who are on IEPs? There's a compliance issue. There are timelines that we have to meet or we will be out of compliance with the law. So it's important that this position be filled with somebody who knows how to do it and can be on top of things and stick to the timelines. We have found in recent years, it has been a stipended position for staff to take on some added responsibilities. We have had one in each school as a stipended position. We have had trouble filling these positions. Which is why this is important. It's compliance with the law. We can't say, oh, well, we haven't been able to fill that, so nobody's setting up these meetings. We have to. Which is why we felt that this position was important. But this will be gone and all of the responsibilities will revert back to the building-based secretaries, the stipended process coordinators, and transportation will return to my office completely. Where I mentioned this, we're also going to lose the instructional coach that was S.R.-funded. Currently, like I said, we have a math specialist coach, a literacy specialist coach, and a co-teaching coach. All three of them are grant-funded, three different grants. Next year, we lose one of those grant-funding sources. So we will lose one of these coaches. We need to keep a coach in math. We need to keep a coach in literacy. So we will keep those special area coaches and they will have to take on the co-teaching coaching responsibilities because that's grant-required. We're also here, as a side note, while it's not a separate full-time position, the model has been that we have a math specialist coach, a co-teaching coach, and a Title I coordinator slash literacy specialist coach. We are going to take the responsibilities of Title I coordinator off of the coach position and those will have to be absorbed by the Director of Teaching and Learning. Essentially, we're losing a dedicated administrator to handle all things Title I, Title II, and Title IV. So while it's not a reduction in FTE, it is a reduction in leadership capacity and responsibility that we're reducing the Title I coordinator component from this position that remains. Maintenance staffing, we have four maintenance facilities and grounds team staff. We will definitely be looking to cut one of the four positions. That is included in the budget figures that you had here earlier tonight. However, depending on other decisions that are made or our continued effort to get down to that 2.5 target budget, we may have to entertain cutting another maintenance position. That is going to impact our ability to get athletic fields lined quickly, to have the facility grounds look manicured. Snow removal operations will be impacted. Quick response to a work order, maintenance, we've got a problem. I need you to come troubleshoot and find out what's going on. You know, back to my comments earlier, I rely on my maintenance and grounds team to do snow removal. And with the reduction in staffing, there may be more delayed openings. There may be more canceled days.
Which contract do they fall under? They fall under?
Yep. Again, we have a custodian part-time at night at TCP. We'd be looking to eliminate that position as well. But I will say, and I'm not ready to get into details right now, but I'm also looking at the possibility of moving at least some of our occupied space at TCP elsewhere, which would reduce the footprint that we would need to clean. So that is a possibility that we're looking at. BCBAs, our Board Certified Behavior Analyst. We have found these positions to be really beneficial in meeting kids' needs and helping teachers put in strategies that help kids stay regulated, stay in class, so that they can be running alongside their peers rather than having to step out, go down to the office, get themselves together, go to a cool-down room, get themselves together. They're in a classroom, learn.
Where are the BCBAs based out of?
There's one currently that supports the Turkey Hill and the primary school. And there's one that supports our out-of-district placement and our middle and high school. We would have one person to handle out-of-district placements, middle school, high school, Turkey Hill, and the primary. We're not going to be able to meet the same level of service. And when I say service, I'm not talking about not meeting IEP services. I'm talking about consulting with classroom teachers, consulting with administrators, the number of formal FBAs that we can actually do and the informal types of functional behavioral assessments that we can do by having a BCBAs go observe in a classroom so that they can develop some strategies that teachers can use, strategies that the student themselves can use.
They're critical. They're critical too in collecting that data so that when we make decisions on some of these, like for the behavior intervention plans, it's based on data, not just on that kid had a bad day with that teacher having a bad day and, you know, everything coming together with emotions, right? They're really great at teasing out that data. And you can see too, like, when I first came on board here, we had 24 students out of district. And although, I will say that we can't say any one particular role got that number down, but we're now at seven now. And I can look at the data and show when we had one BCBAs, it went down a little bit. When we had that second BCBAs, it went down significantly too. So I know that they definitely were part of being able to keep students in district, keep them in the classes, and help those teachers with strategies to keep those students regulated. We also have gone down to zero restraints in the district. Whereas before, I think about four or five years ago, we had 100 and something. Granted, there were a couple of students who had some real difficulties, but that's a big jump to come down to zero for the last two or three years that we've had. And I directly relate that to the BCBAs. So it's going to be, that's going to be an impact that we're going to have to really realize that we may definitely struggle at a different level not having that fully staffed.
I'm sorry, on that previous slide, did you just outline the history on that position? We've always had somebody staffing here, but we added to it? Or we had nobody and now we have two?
So when I came on board, we had nobody.
Okay.
I brought somebody on board. And then two to three years after, we had the need to have somebody else because it was just too much. And so we've had two since, I want to say, I think since 2016 or 17.
So do they respond to emergent events?
Emergent events, and then they also do consulting. So they consult to our TLC room. So it was great. We were able to build the capacity and have an achieve room and a TLC room in each building. We built that as well during my tenure here. But now the BCBAs consults to all of those programs. So they're meeting with those teachers every week. Hey, who are the kids in your class? Any of them having difficulty? They try to get ahead of the problems and give those teachers suggestions on how to work with the behavior intervention plans, put those things in place. And for the general ed staffing as well.
Thank you.
It was going to be too difficult to have a paraprofessional slide attached to each school because annually, each spring, we take a look at who are the students who need to have a paraprofessional either as a one-to-one through their IEP or need to be in a supported, inclusive setting. So we need to provide paraprofessional support here. We always take a look as a leadership team. who do we have that's moving up to the next school? Do people move with a student to the next school? Does an FTE move to the next school? Um, do we need to maintain this level of paraprofessional staffing? Oh, somebody's coming off an IEP, or the need for a one-to-one was removed from an IEP, which, again, frees us up. We look at this every single year anyway. The numbers flex based on the need of the students at the school. There are times during the school year we have to add a para because that service has been put into, um, a child's IEP. So this number, it's hard to nail down. So I pulled them from being assigned school by school, and I'm just gonna tell you that we're gonna look at this holistically. There's potential that we might be able to, to cut back as many as seven, maybe not. It's important to note that our paraprofessionals in our buildings are some of the most flexible staff we have. When needed, when we can't get substitutes to cover a class, when a teacher has called out, often we're taking a paraprofessional and having them cover as the substitute for the day. They were critical to our survival in keeping school open during that awful hybrid COVID year. They're really critical staff in a variety of ways. So we're gonna have to be really thoughtful and careful about the cuts we make here. So I'm not really ready to say for sure how many, and they're not included in the budget figures you have here right now.
None of these.
No. Administrator reductions. So we've already talked about losing the athletic director, the Title I coordinator, coach position. I, I referenced this earlier. When I first got here, there were shared assistant principals across two buildings. I'm here these days, I'm not here these days. Oh, this principal's out sick today. I'm not supposed to be at this building today, but I have to be the principal today. So I can't be here where I planned to be. I have to go over there. It's disjointed. It feels sometimes chaotic. It puts those administrators in a position where they're not firmly anchored as a leader with the faculty in either building. They build relationships with kids. They are part of a crisis response team. They get to know the kids. They know how to interact with them, to calm them down, to process through the decision they made. What decision might they make differently next time, so on and so forth. If we are going to be losing behavioral health staff positions, our assistant principals are going to become even more important. If we're losing general staff positions, less staff for duty assignments, our assistant principals become even more critical. They already are out covering recess duty, lunch duty. You might remember last spring, we had a conversation with all of the principals and the assistant principals about bullying. And you heard that very day that one of the administrators had spent five hours in a bullying investigation. That's one. One claim of bullying, one investigation, five hours for the day. That's nearly the entire day. I cannot imagine the impact to the climate and culture of the building, the support, both academic and behavioral, for the students if we return to the model of a split ping-pong assistant principal situation. We looked at it. I feel it's one of the most detrimental cuts we could make, honestly. Because I would go back to the days of my principals running all day, every day, responding to one crisis situation after another. Is that really what we want? Our classroom, school environment to look like, feel like, be like? I say no. So you don't have a proposal here to reduce the number of assistant principals. That said, I have worked with the assistant principals. They have all, uh, agreed. They're on board with moving from a 12-month, year-round work responsibility to a school-year work responsibility with some added days. As a result, their position, their, their work, the time they're available to our administrators to meet is being reduced. Their salary is being reduced. There were other reimbursement benefits that were part of their contract that they also agreed to give up. So the total savings of reworking their contracts is over $24,000. I'm gonna advocate that I think that that's, that's an appropriate cut, that we're gonna feel, but that I think we can manage and live with rather than actually eliminating the positions. Okay. Two hours in, and I'm almost done, I promise. I wanted to give you this slide, which is cuts at a glance, so that you can see each school location, the cuts. Down at the bottom, a total of FTE, full-time equivalents, that are being lost from each of these schools. I did leave the middle school athletics as their own separate entity. Um, we have decisions to make there. Yes, the total number at the high school is the largest number. However, our staff at the high school is the largest staff. And you can see that the total cuts at Turkey Hill are not far behind the total cuts at the high school. Again, not factoring the athletic department in strictly as high school because it is both middle and high school. There aren't as many cuts at the middle school. We don't feel we can make them. The class sizes there are already and have been for years, at 25 or slightly above 25. So we don't, we don't think that there are many more cuts to be had at the middle school. If you look at it holistically, six through 12 as compared to K through 5, pretty comparable.
It says AP reduction under LMS. What does that stand for?
That's that contract reduction, the working reduction that I just talked about as a assistant principal, which is not an FTE.
Oh, I see that.
So I didn't list it as an FTE, but it is a reduction nonetheless. Another way to take a look at this is by category of staff. When I say "teacher" here on this slide, that's anybody that is included in the teacher contract. So our BCBAs, our school psychologists, our guidance counselors, our social workers, our nurses, they're all included in the teacher contract. So when you look at the total number of employees that fall in that category, the cuts that are on the table is 13% of the total group. Custodial maintenance, 14%. Paras, potentially, if we get up to that seven FTE figure, could be approaching 10%. Secretarial cuts, 20, 22%. Hard, hard to quantify the FTEs on our part-time secretaries because they're not truly FTE. Administrator positions and reductions, you've got 14% plus reductions. IT, we only have two IT staff in the entire district. We did not even entertain a discussion about cutting IT. The, the conversation we entertained was dialing back the contracted service support. Food service, there were zero cuts there. That's because those are staff who are paid hourly, and they're paid out of the revolving account that is the food lunch program. They are not paid out of the local budget. The school community programs, that's our early learning center, our before-and-after-school extended day, our grant program for parent education and, um, playgroup. Again, no cuts there because those are all funded either through self-sustaining accounts. There's a fee that's paid. That's the money that funds the program, or it's grant-funded. The other category, we have some employees that are on individual contracts. They're not part of a bargaining group, but they're not administrators. The athletic trainer position falls into that category because there really wasn't another good category to put them in. So, again, we tried really hard to make sure that no one, school, no one, staffing group was, was gonna bear the brunt of these cuts. We approached it in a way that was thoughtful, I believe. There are cuts on here, uh, maybe with the exception of the classroom teacher position at the primary and the classroom teacher position that was the bubble class at, at the Turkey Hill. I'm okay with those cuts. The rest of these cuts have a real impact. This is the staffing level that we need to have if you want to see student achievement in the district, if you want to see students having options available to them, if you want to see their mental health being supported so that they can get down to academics, to have your buildings running efficiently, to have your grounds and your facilities maintained and cleaned efficiently and satisfactorily. This is the staffing level that we need to have, what we have currently. We have deliberately built this in accordance with the strategy that was outlined and with the intent to meet the COVID impact. This was intentional. This was purposeful. This is what this district needs. And now, because of all worlds colliding with a triple whammy, we are going to start to systematically dismantle what we've built. I will tell you what I always tell you. We will do the very best we can with what we've got. Our goal is still to make sure that kids have what they need so that they can learn and they can achieve and they can grow, that their mental health needs are being taken care of. But I am going to tell you, we are not going to be able to meet the same level that we, that we can now. We will not see the same outputs. We will not. That's just the fact. We're going back to FY19 in many, many ways. So I am really not happy to make any of these recommendations for you. And it's really difficult to get down to the final straw to get to that 2.5 because these cuts are impactful. They are really impactful. And the decision-making that we're at now, it's tough. It's tough. If there's a way that we can pull back some of these things because I can find some other place, I don't know. Maybe with a good night's sleep and clear eyes, I can look at that spreadsheet again. We have, like, for days on end, literally, looked at all of the spreadsheet and trying to figure out what else can we cut? I don't wanna cut anymore. I don't even wanna cut the positions that we're cutting. I don't. We, we set out to build this, and we did, and we're starting to see the fruits of this. I don't wanna be making any of these recommendations for you. None of them. So, I said I would give you a quick picture of what the impact is to curriculum and intervention with the staffing cuts. Our current model, we have a Director of Teaching and Learning in our curriculum office, a Title I coordinator who is also a literacy specialist coach, a math specialist coach, a co-teaching coach. We have an intervention teacher for K-2. We have an intervention teacher for, for 3-5. They both oversee two tutors each. With the cuts, we're still gonna have a Director of Teaching and Learning. No, no dedicated Title I coordinator position, but we'll still have a literacy co-teaching coach, a math co-teaching coach, two tutors at K-2, two tutors at 3-5, but they will be under the direction of the coaches. We wrestled with, do we cut the teacher, the intervention teacher? Do we cut the tutors? We opted to keep more bodies, more hands-on directly with kids. This was the way to get that to happen. And if absolutely necessary, our coaches can jump in and provide some direct support to kids as well. So, taking a look at all of this, right now, we are not there at a 2.5. We're at about a 3.6. There's still some fine-tuning. I found one little nugget today that I need to go back in and pull out and see what that does to my percentage here. It's gonna help me get there without cutting any more people. We're gonna continue to think and brainstorm. Are there other things that we can reduce or eliminate? Other models that we can explore so that I don't have to cut anymore, and maybe I can actually restore some things? But here, this first iteration tonight, I cannot sit here and tell you, yep, these are the cuts, that'll get us right where we need to be. We'll land at that 2.5. We're good. We're not good yet. We still have a lot of heartache in decision-making ahead to figure out how to get there. Again, I always, we, we always say this in our budget presentations, the unknown factors still at this time, don't know what that final number's gonna look like for health insurance. That is the big thing that we're all really waiting for. We don't know of any additional grants that are coming out of DESI for any of the work that we're doing, behavioral health, academic support. What, we don't know of anything on the horizon. That said, I think we've proven over the last three, four years that we go after everything that we think will help further. that we go after everything that we think will help further our cause. And there was one that came across yesterday or the day before, and Anika is looking at that right now. The thing is, some of the things that we've gotten ourselves involved in, the academies with DESI, that puts us higher in the queue for eligibility for grants that come up down the road. So the things that we have jumped into and committed to have paid off. We have gotten a leg up on some of the competitive grants. We don't know if there's gonna be continuation of some of them. We'll have to wait and see. But everything that comes up, we look at and if it is helpful to what we're trying to accomplish, we go after it. And we've gotten almost everything that we've pursued. Chapter 70 funding, right now, we're level funded from last year. Circuit breaker, we're not gonna know that for sure till we get closer to the end of the year, but recently it's been more like seventy-five percent.
Is that figured in this or you, what's figured?
The level funded sort of situation, but if something comes in different, then look back to the drawing board. The federal and state grants, again, those are all those entitlement grants, our Title I, II, III, our special ed grants. Everybody gets those. And every year, they tell you how much you're getting based on your student enrollment and a formula that they use to determine that. We don't typically find out what those allocations are. Late July, sometimes early mid-August. And then we have to write the proposals that align with the parameters of the grant, which change sometimes year to year. And then it has to be submitted and then it has to be approved, so it takes a little bit of time. But we're planning for level funding because we haven't heard anything through the pipeline that is suggesting significant cuts are coming. It's also important to note, there are a few other things that are not settled. We know that we are engaged in bargaining with the teachers group and our paraprofessional group. There are some other employee contracts that are up for renewal and we do have to revisit our unaffiliated salary schedule and make some salary adjustments there as well. We do know that our out-of-district tuition is going up almost 4.7%, which I'll take compared to the 14% jump we saw last year.
It said fourteen when I looked at the slide the first time.
Yeah, because I needed somebody to.
Okay, I'm really glad that's not the number I saw when I looked at this last night.
Last year.
It was bad enough one year.
Yeah, last year, fourteen percent.
And that's a straight inflation number, not an enrollment affected number.
Not, I don't think it's entirely.
So it's the operational service division, for years, for a few years, they had zero percent increase and then all of a sudden last year we got slammed with a fourteen percent increase. So what it was, was the, basically, we took the number of students we had out of district. Those placements all got a fourteen percent. So for last year, I think it was about $126,000 that we paid additionally just because it went up fourteen.
In addition to another placement, yeah, right. So for those of you keeping track at home, we're spending almost a quarter of a million dollars more this year for out-of-district placements than we spent last year.
Due to OSD, not due to additional students going.
Well, there's no OSD and there's an additional student.
That moved in.
Yes, yes. But not due to, yeah, not due to a number of students going out, yeah, right.
Okay, so our budget timeline is potentially gonna be not our hundred percent typical timeline based on how to move our budget hearing forward, move it earlier a week. So I have even less time to fine tune and have a final recommended budget for you.
So before we get into the nuts and bolts of the subject matter, the, I'd like to understand what's going on with the with the schedule, with the finance committee and specifically what's driving that additional week that I was under the impression we were aligned with and the town manager's typical schedule for the.
They had us down on March the fourteenth.
I was told when I asked about, they like to have their information forty-eight hours ahead of time and we wouldn't have approved the budget forty-eight hours ahead of time. So I said, if you get it like on the eighteenth and then we approve it on the twentieth, any adjustments, we'll let you know. And then I was told it was the fourteenth.
Okay.
And I had not been told that previously.
Because historically during my time here, we have our regular meeting, the third Wednesday of March is the budget hearing and the vote. And the third Thursday in the month of March, I go to the finance committee with the budget.
So I don't know why that changed.
Okay, I, so there are a couple of drivers here. For me personally, my availability is gonna be challenged here. Typically in that span, the finance committee meets every week. So in February and March, they're on typically a weekly cadence. The question that I have are really two questions. Number one is, what exactly is driving this? Is this a race to get something in the warrant on a timeline that is different from what we've had in the past? But also, one of the things that happened when I joined the finance committee at my request was that when the school department comes, it comes with an approved budget. I think given the magnitude of where we're at right now and the request that we've gotten from the finance committee, we can say, we'll bring you the current proposed budget on whatever day you want, but the approved budget will happen on the timeline that the school committee sets.
Which they offered that, but that would mean I would go to the finance committee on the fourteenth, present to the school committee for the budget hearing on the twentieth and go back to the finance committee on the twenty-first of March.
I understand, I understand that that's not ideal. But what I'm, there are three things at play. One is their schedule, one is what's driving, you know, warrant publication and that sort of thing and their need to hold a public hearing and vote on.
Their public hearing is the twenty-eighth.
Vote, okay. So why do we need to be there on the thirteenth when the public hearing is the twenty-eighth?
No idea, that's what I was told.
The other thing to consider is that if I present to them.
Or maybe Brian.
Well, so from watching the finance committee, they said they had someone else scheduled. I believe it was Monty Tech on the twenty-first. And the chair potentially thought, okay, they're switching us from the fourteenth to the twenty-first, but it was not like that happening.
Monty Tech is very difficult to schedule.
A part of it too was that they didn't really need the presentation as much and they really cared about the numbers, which I feel like we can give them the whatever it is, two and a half or seven, two point seven five percent. I feel like the numbers wouldn't be that hard to give them earlier. It's more of a presentation, like, adjustments.
So the challenge is too, that if I go with a presentation and a final budget to the finance committee on the fourteenth, that's the first time I'm presenting the final budget. I'm not even presenting the final budget to you. I'm presenting it to the public and the finance committee before I even have a chance to present it to you.
By statute, the school committee is responsible for the school department budget. The, there, we need to present a budget to the town for printing in the warrant when the warrant is due.
Right.
The finance committee by statute needs to hold a public hearing and recommend on the items on the warrant. There is no statute that says that the finance committee needs to hear an approved budget from the school department on the thirteenth of March. So a conver, in my opinion, this is just Pete Beardmore talking. A conversation needs to occur between the chair and the superintendent and the town manager and the chair of the finance committee to figure out an amenable solution. But we have a meeting scheduled, they have a meeting scheduled. In my mind, there was alignment around the twenty-first. Truth be told, I've planned travel around that schedule and I would like to be at all applicable meetings. So.
I agree with Mr. Beardmore too. I think it's important to relay to the finance committee why our timeline is the type of one for them. It's already been set and it's all these other factors that are coming into play of why we need to meet on the twentieth and not say we end in February or the beginning of March.
I'm happy to ask the chair of FinCom and the town manager if we could talk about the need for this. I have already broached that with the chair of FinCom and I was told that he feels the insurance numbers will be in the beginning of February. I said if they are in at the beginning of February, moving things up wouldn't be a total disaster. But if they are not, we won't have the numbers.
I don't think that this is a direct relation, causal relationship between when the insurance numbers come in and when we'll be ready. We've just listened to a presentation of enormous magnitude.
Absolutely.
And we have a lot of work to do between now and then. And I think that we need to give ourselves the space to do that. That's my basic premise. The way we've operated over the last five years has been based on an agreement between the finance committee and the school committee that in my mind has always made sense. If the conditions have changed, that we no longer need to follow that protocol that we've agreed to over the last five years and that's totally fine. We just need to get that out now. But I don't think that we should be planning to hold a hearing before the twentieth of March.
I'm fine with going back.
I think we also owe it to the public to give this as much time.
It needs to air out, yeah.
This needs time. And that was the date we had told the public.
And by the way, things are tough all over.
Yes.
The town manager, you know, communicated an email to the capital plan committee that the fiscal forecast will not be delivered on time this year because of staffing issues, right? So like, we gotta work with each other here.
All right, I will give that a try.
So our next meeting isn't for three weeks.
Well, we had entertained an additional meeting. We had said the twenty-fourth of the thirty-first.
That was what I was asking.
To make up for the lack of talking about anything else tonight. I was gonna bring that up at the end.
Oh, sorry.
After this.
I didn't mean to jump in.
Well, we're talking schedule. So I know Lauren said she was not available on the thirty-first.
I could make myself available. I went and looked, I can make myself available for that.
And unfortunately, I'm completely unavailable on the seventh.
On the seventh, okay.
So that, and I'm not saying to reschedule that meeting, but if we can have an interim meeting between now and then, maybe to, there's a lot to absorb here and a lot to feed back.
Well, exactly.
I think another meeting between now and then may be helpful.
And I thought that we needed another meeting to absorb all of this because to come up with questions right now, there's gonna be more questions that show up in the middle of the night. You know, that's what's gonna happen.
I'll be out if anybody wants to talk. Just the three of us, only two of us.
Only two of us, yes. So anyways, so the idea of usually we hear the budget and then at the next meeting, we have public questions and answers. I wouldn't wanna do that till February seventh and the earliest. So this next meeting is just any questions we would have or comments we would have plus the rest of the things that we're not doing tonight.
And I think that there's, you know, this is going to generate public comment. And, you know, we need to avail ourselves to public comment at every meeting.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. But I mean, the question and answer period that we set aside twice in each cycle, which incidentally, if we go with the thirteenth, we might not get to the next one. You know, I think that we need to put another meeting in. So does the, while we're at this, does the twenty-fourth or the thirty-first work? I'm okay tonight.
I can do either one.
Is one less busy than the other, Tony? Are they both disastrous?
Both kids have, I'll do whatever. It doesn't matter. Both kids have the same thing on the same day, every Wednesday.
Both of our kids have track on Wednesdays.
Brian, you wanna decide?
I'm available both days.
Yeah, we're both days. Is the twenty-fourth easier for you?
The twenty-fourth is easier and I think having it in a week might be better for us being able to ask questions in the public who just watched this meeting to get some questions answered sooner than we may have.
Does that work for you?
Your schedules for the next week.
You busy?
Okay.
Yep. Is a week enough time or do you need some time to breathe? Because you guys, I know you guys just spent a lot of, do you need two weeks to?
This isn't gonna change very dearly, will it? Whatever your nugget was.
I'll bring the best I can for you in a week.
Where will it be held in a week?
Here.
Okay.
Could I offer some, do you wanna do some commentary?
Well, I'm thinking we're getting there now that we did the scheduling. Yes, before that though, I just wanna comment that, thank you. This is a horrific task, an absolutely horrific task for everybody. And I cannot imagine doing this under normal circumstances, but without a finance person and trying to do all that technical stuff all at the same time. All of you, all the principals, thank you, all of you. This has been a task and three quarters or maybe ten times the task it should be. So I want to start with that. And yes, Tony.
Well, are we gonna go?
Well, everybody's gonna have a turn.
Okay, okay, you're correct. Dr. Burnham, one of the things that would be helpful for us to know because this is about hitting a dollar amount, is the, two things. The price of the proposed, the value of the salary of the proposed cut and then whether or not that person is part of a bargaining unit. Because if they're not part of a bargaining unit, then we can hire or fire them at will because they're at will employees. Can we do that?
If there, if you are, from what who got, as we call it, rift, as one that got let go, that was a very tenured teacher in another district after twelve years, as long as there's a date, it used to be April first, is it still or is it, is there a different date? I don't know, there's a certain date you need to tell people that there is a reduction in force.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so like.
It's not a matter of you can't, you can't let someone go because of the contract.
Right, what I'm saying is if they're not a member of the contract, then there will be less potential legal friction in letting them go and therefore less cost associated with that act.
There shouldn't be legal friction with any of these cuts because it's budget-driven.
Okay.
As long as we follow the contract and the execution of those cuts. In other words, we may cut a position that has a very senior staff member in it who now will have bumping rights because they have more seniority and can bump the least senior person in the role that they are also. in the role that they are also licensed and eligible to be in.
So, it doesn't turn into a legal thing as long as you follow the rules?
Like, the thing that I'm thinking of, and this is just because of how it's laid out. I know that the athletic director is a comparatively high-paid position, and he is not a member of a bargaining unit. Setting aside the impact on student achievement that that cut would have, if, you know, if it's between a teacher that's, you know, teaching the Wilson reading method or, and making, you know, forty thousand dollars, or the athletic director who's making ninety thousand dollars. If we're talking about hitting a number, then it would be helpful to know what the value of the savings would be by each cut. If you can predict, using the contract bargaining method, who gets bumped and how much, that would be great for bargaining unit members. For non-bargaining unit members, then it's just eliminating their salary.
It would be, I agree, that was probably one of my points. It would be easier if, because I'm looking at the cuts, and it's hard to tell the impact of each cut from a financial standpoint.
So, here's the thing that I would offer, and how you feel about it. I can get to that number quickly just by letting go every single administrator and myself.
I don't wanna do that.
And, right... But how do you run your district and your schools? How do you execute on programs, service delivery, so on and so forth? So, I don't want it to be solely driven by a price tag attached. Like, we didn't approach it that way. We approached... You saw that there are a lot of part-time, not highly-paid staff that are on this list because we're trying to get to the number without having a real detrimental impact on the classroom, what happens in the classroom, the ability of the administrator to support teachers in delivery of high-quality instruction, differentiated instruction, using data to determine what students need. The day-to-day operation of the building. Honestly, it would've been a whole lot easier if it was just a price-tag-driven thing. I would've just ranked ordered them based on that and tried to get to that number.
I don't think that's what they mean.
That's not what it's coming from.
I think what they mean is if they knew what the salary was, that it was gonna be the cost, then they could reason it better logically, knowing that... That's really hard to do with the teaching positions because of the bump.
The bumping rights, yeah, yeah.
Because of the bump.
Even if you could rank it... If you could rank it, you know, one to five stars as far as the budget impacts.
That's really hard to do, particularly without a finance person.
It is.
To figure all that out, because if you wanna get down to the nitty-gritty, you also have who gets health insurance and who doesn't. And that's a whole other, because that's, you know...
I mean, this is...
And not to cut people because they have health insurance, but to say that we're entertaining this cut, this is the price of that cut.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
I think that would be really hard to do.
So, can I offer just a suggestion?
Yes, please.
One comment. All of these positions, we have to look at as a fully burdened position as well.
Yes.
Right? So, it's not just the salary, it's the benefits and whatever other carrying costs associated with them. And carrying costs associated with the cut, by the way, like unemployment or that sort of thing. Maybe a way to look at this is rather than by the individual positions, that at-a-glance document where you've got this down by, you know, thirteen percent of our teaching staff, that's a huge number when it's a fully burdened number. You know, and look at the categories. I think that that, it may be somewhat a good middle ground or somewhat instructive for us to get an idea of where the dollars are being made up, actually being made up here. And I... Number one, I don't wanna create a massive math problem here. On the other hand, we're responsible for the budget, and the budget is made up of dollars and cents at the end of the day. So, I do think we need to kind of find some middle ground here in terms of adding some calculus to this.
But like, the non-CBA members, their salaries and their value doesn't, isn't subjected... And what I meant by legal friction was the bumping rights. There are no bumping rights, so we know exactly how much that dollars are. That position would be worse.
That, you know, was a definite number, and that we have
Yeah.
Those numbers. We have this year's budget.
Yeah.
We have those.
Yes, we can tell exactly how much it's worth.
So, we can look those up. I'm trying not to give her a seventh.
Oh, yeah, I don't wanna do that. I only have to do a ton of the actual...
You can look that up in this year's budget.
I'll do that.
But...
But the actual actual dollar amount is the projected FY25 salary.
Yeah, right.
Not based on the current year.
The twenty-fourth salary will give us some idea.
We'll give an idea. We'll make it closer and not make you go bananas to try and get all this information. Just to try... Peter?
So, first of all, I wanna echo everything that you said, Mrs. Arshinbo, about what it took to get here. But I think even more important than that, I wanna just make one thing really clear. We've had a lot of discussions, both on and offline, inside and outside of meetings, about the role of school committee members and who's in what lane. The superintendent and I had an email exchange last week about who's in what lane relative to a question that I was asking. And to do our jobs correct well, by the way, there's always gonna be some blurry areas, some gray area here to make sure that we're all able to make the right decisions and have the right level of information to do our jobs. The budget, by statute, is the school committee's job. So, the work that the administration has been doing has been done on behalf of the school committee. And I wanna make that really clear to the individual employees that may be affected by this and the students and families that are going to be affected by this. And this is not a position that any of us want or welcomed or promoted. This is a situation that we're in that was, you know, outlined by the superintendent at the beginning of the night. And our job, and it's ultimately our decision, these were all recommendations, is really landing on the least bad decision at the end of the day, right? And that is a lot of work that is now on us. And we have to interact, ask questions, discuss in meetings what the impacts are and how we can minimize the bad relative to this decision that we have to make. But this isn't the decision of the superintendent or any administrator at the end of the day. We rely heavily on their work and their recommendations, but it is our decision and our responsibility. And we cannot emphasize that enough. The administration and all of our staff work on behalf of the town, and we are elected to represent the interests of the town and the students.
Interests of the students.
Uh, to do that. So, let's not forget that during this process. I... This is an enormous amount to absorb, and I'll have a lot of very detailed questions over the course of the next several weeks. Couple of the things that I asked for of the superintendent, both publicly and privately, is that, to whatever extent possible, this is proportional, meaning that it's not all the high school or all any other school. And I, you know, in full disclosure, do have, still have some concerns about the proportionality of this. My concerns have been lessened over the course of the night tonight. I understand the logic. However, we have a roughly six percent budget shortfall, and we are looking to cut thirteen percent of our FTEs and teachers. And to me, that is really hard to get my head around in terms of the difference in those two numbers. The other thing that's really weighing heavily on me is the athletics program. I had made a request at the beginning of this year to get some transparency around the funding and the numbers and where the money comes and goes around the athletics program. I believe that relative to other districts, parents in particular are paying a disproportionate amount of money for our kids to participate in athletics in Lunenburg. We have a good athletic program, but we don't have the best. We don't have the best offerings. We don't have the best facilities. And what has been proposed tonight is going to be not only devastating to our program, particularly in the middle school, but also, a lot of this is invariably going to be put back onto the backs of the coaches and the parents who are already, in my opinion, carrying a disproportionate weight. And I just, I'm very concerned about that, and I think that we need to give that some thought. The other areas that I think we need to be thoughtful about... I found myself over the last several months in conversations with folks like legislators, and, you know, we're saying compliance is a problem, and they're saying, but, you know, specifically what compliance? Tell us what to go after. I think that those are areas. NEAS was brought up tonight. I would love to hear NEAS' position on how to better fund schools. Because they can want all they want, unless the accreditation isn't coming, it's our job to figure out where the resources go. And everything else, in my opinion, is a recommendation. The same goes for the MIAA, by the way, when it comes to athletics. Now, they have more authority. I'd love to hear from our reps from the Mass Association of School Committees. Like, what are we doing to rein in the MIAA and ensure that we're getting value for our dollars when it comes to officiating and all these other various things that we have to participate in that require a full-time athletic director? I don't... It may be too little, too late to have any effect on those things, but at the end of the day, we're having like a teacher versus athletic director versus, you know... There's no right decision, there's no good decision. But in my mind, like, we're... Back to proportionality, you know, particularly the athletic program, that is not a proportional impact, in my view. And I think we need to really give that one some thought. But, you know, it's also the teachers. I mean, thirteen percent of our teaching staff is a huge number, a huge number. And, you know, our instructional, reading, writing, arithmetic, history in the high school, it's more than thirteen percent, it's almost twenty percent. Those are really hard numbers to swallow.
Okay. Someone else have comment to make?
So, these numbers still have us at a budget gap of almost two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars, so further cuts are gonna need to be made. Do you anticipate further staffing cuts?
I don't know that I'll be able to find that money anywhere else. The biggest portion of our entire budget is in staffing.
Okay.
And I can't do anything about the utility costs. I can't do anything about the transportation costs, you know?
It's two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars, that's a lot of money still. I think that when you look at the school from five years ago, six years ago, seven years ago, we have come a really long way in building up these amazing systems. And then you look at the COVID learning loss and what kids lost during that year, and then during the hybrid year. I think we've done a really good job, and it's awful to look at this and know that we're decimating... We're decimate these systems that we've built up and that we're gonna lose a lot, a lot of the things that people have really come to rely on in the town. And that is, this is really hard to swallow, but there's no other option. So, thank you to the district staff for putting this together because I know you guys have been working on this nonstop. And this took a lot of effort to put together and involved a lot of hard decisions and a lot of hard work to put together. I know we still have a long way to go, but thank you.
Okay. Brian, did you wanna say something?
Yes, thank you. I would also echo what everybody else has been saying about... I really appreciate that you had the time that went through this and the difficult decision that had been made and then being able to spread out as evenly as possible the potential cuts. Some concerns I had, I think, the middle school sport, losing the middle school sport and that. That's a hard one for me. I feel like that should stay. I think that's gonna help a lot with the social and emotional aspect of those kids too. I think with the athletic director position too, that really set off somewhat of a... Just concern as well, even going back to the strategy for continuous improvement that we wanna improve operational efficiencies. I feel like losing that experience that athletic director affects the operational efficiencies and communication. So, that was a big concern. I also think that putting it to an admin who might not necessarily have that experience in athletics and either just a pool of two or three people, that's concerning, right? If you have a site that open up to all teachers, maybe that's increasing the pool. Or if you add in the system some of these, maybe can't get into that kind of role, it would make sense. But I feel like somebody with no athletic experience, I mean, that's a hard... The means are athletic director to someone who has experience. It kind of reminded me of how you were talking about the special... The superintendent was talking about the specialists in sciences. You have the specialists in physics and biology. They are really the specialists in that field. And they can do those quick fixes during the day, make those... Anything that's going on, changes in schedules. Another thing I thought of too, should we really look at, athletic duties again too, or any other duties professionally to help out the state today. And I think the cuts in general are gonna increase work for everyone. There's gonna be increasingly going to be challenges like the superintendent said. And I think that was, my first thought was why even to a certain extent in the high school, they're looking at the point that they are gonna have to be helping a lot. The world is really going to be challenges. I think it was creative with the admin cuts, I think it was staff, that was notable. And then for the parent educators too, I think that's another support system that we need to keep. And it's also typically a low cost. You don't pay our parents that much, not many schools pay their parents well. I almost think that that might be even a category they have had to not even cut, but that the teachers with larger classes now are gonna need those support systems. That those parents can give, can have a good consideration as well. I also think we should have a meeting with the town manager on the options of the child reduce healthcare costs as well. And then also from the finance committee, I heard that the state income is down, so I do not have high hopes for the chapter seventy-five to be allowed. That was all I had for now.
Thank you, Brian. Tony, did you wanna add anything else?
No.
Okay. I guess my bottom comment is I think the whole business is horrific, but the achievement piece is the piece that I think we need to hang our hats on. And I was very glad to see no AP classes would be cut. Affected, yes, they will be bigger and hotter to manage and time-wise, and that kids may have to make a choice, which perhaps they didn't have to make before. And that's unfortunate, but life is like that, and you have to make choices. And that's unfortunate, but life is like that and you have to make choices. Are you going to do AP physics or are you going to play in the band? I, those are choices that have to be made. I appreciate that some of the class sizes at the younger levels are a bit higher, but mostly they're, they're going to be pretty stable and not more than 25. I've seen a fourth grade classroom with 39 kids. You don't want to go there, trust me.
Oh my God.
Um, I didn't teach it, I just saw it. I got laid off instead. So, um, I think that's really important. I think it's really important that we didn't decimate any program, like no program is gone. I'm really concerned about the AD though, and we all know that I am not the athletic promoter for the most part. But that bothers me. But I don't have any better ideas. That's the thing. I, I may not like that, but I, I don't have any ideas on that.
If we found a way to keep the AD, would the middle school sports program be able to continue?
If you kept the AD full-time?
Full-time.
Full-time. It would have to be full-time.
I mean, because that's, that's something that's very, very recent, middle school sports. That started since I've been on the committee. So I think we all have a lot to think about over the next week, two weeks, three weeks, however long it, it takes till we get down to the number that that it needs to be. Hopefully, um, the chair of FinCom is correct and we get the health insurance number earlier because at least that would be that much less if it came in well, that we would have to cut.
When do we find out about the electrical?
The electrical stuff, it's, is she, um, the town manager wrote us an email that said that that's not going to be settled till November. So, isn't that what that basically said? Yeah, so that's not helpful. I mean, the, the contract is up in November. So therefore you wouldn't have another contract in place before November with the municipal aggregate. That's, it's, the town gets, gets there and most many people in town work through the municipal aggregate to get their electricity at a somewhat less cost. Not that there's a less cost when it involves Unilever, but a somewhat less cost. So that's not coming in anytime soon. But.
Are we going to budget based on an estimate of what that municipal agreement will be? Or are we going to budget based on published Unilever rates?
That's a good guess. That's a good question.
I don't know how I could even estimate an agreement.
I don't know how you would either.
What is this budget based on? Last year's usage?
Yeah, basically what we've been spending. And then, you know, anticipating that there's going to be some type of an increase. What I've built in there may not, depends on what the increase is. It, it may not fully cover everything and then we'll be looking to cut back in other budget lines in order to free up money to cover the actual. See, this is, this is part of the challenge. When you're not going to know what the actual is until December and you're into your budget year and you already have your budget, it's really.
This is also far more challenging without a finance director, without a budget director.
Not going to lie, a little bit.
So specific to the, to the utility rate, I had had a literally not even a conversation, a text exchange with Mr. Jeffries about this and he wound up relaying that exchange in the select board meeting last week. Has a school committee request. It was not. It was E. Biermark texting with Michael Ray Jeffries. Nevertheless, the request was, could we get some sort of estimate or idea from the consultants who negotiate this on our behalf based on whatever the prevailing rate was when the last contract was negotiated and what we could do in the future? And I think that the, the problem is, is that, you know, our current rate of, I believe it's like 11 and a half cents. The electric rates have gone up substantially since then. So if we're basing, you know, based on whatever our rate was over the last year or two,
There's going to be.
There's going to be a big jump. And, but it might not be, you know, whatever, whatever the standard published rate from Unilever is today. It'll probably be something less than that. The question is, is what's that number? And, and there are, there are experts in this field, none of whom are in this room, that could probably help us to zero in on that if, you know, i- i- if, if we could bring them, you know, bring them into the discussion.
I have, um, the town manager's response and basically what she says is she's trying to get some kind of an estimate through a, from Tradition Energy. Trying to, some, some consult. She's trying to get an estimate.
Okay, that's encouraging.
And that's what she said. So, um, I will get back to her because she, I didn't know where that came from. So now I know where that came from. So.
And, and I, I actually wa, I tried to call you last week to discuss that because it came across as a school committee request, but it, it wasn't. It was me.
Okay.
Um, but nevertheless.
Nevertheless.
That's really where we need to go. So.
Yeah, I would agree. So I, um, I don't know that we have any place else to go right now. I.
And I don't know that I have any clear help as to where to go next either because I can't I can't be equitable in cuts with administrators, but then what an athletic director position.
Back, yeah, yeah.
And not cut any teachers, but the teachers make up the biggest bulk of our entire staff.
How many teachers do we have total? Roughly?
Over 200.
I mean, it only makes sense. That's what we did.
Right, right.
And, and I, and I don't know, I tried to point out that a lot of the positions that I'm saying we're going to cut, we added in recent years. We sent additions. I'm just saying that we're going back to what our staffing was three years ago. Right? In our teaching. Because when we had the added grant money, we didn't add custodians. We didn't add, we added
Teachers.
Professional sta, teachers.
Or guidance counselors.
Yeah.
All that, all of the teachers.
Yeah. So. It, it's, it's definitely not an easy.
No.
You know, when we approach it and we're like, okay, put in this and this and this, run the numbers and it's like, you kidding? Like, what else?
What else could be?
What else can we put in here?
What would be the most expeditious way of getting people's questions answered? Because we could all come with a list of questions the next time, but you wouldn't have had time to figure out the answers to the questions.
And how can the public ask questions?
The public would always send emails to lps@lunenburgschools.net.
LPS@lunenburgschools.net. Okay.
Yeah.
If they want an answer ahead of time. And it's good to ask questions ahead of time because then we can get the information.
So I would assume the best thing is for us to get questions to you. But I also would assume that with the week in between, you know, you're not going to have time to answer all these questions. And do the tweaking and do all the meetings and do what you're supposed to do. You know, all of that. So I, I would suggest that we write the questions, but if they don't all get answered next week, it's okay.
Yep, there can easily be a backlog.
That, yes, because
Yeah.
I can't imagine, I mean, I have a few questions and we've talked about this a lot. So if, if you, you know, I can imagine there's a lot of questions and I know how most of this stuff works. And if you don't know how it works, that's a lot more questions. So, um, I think, I think that would probably be the best way to proceed. And then I will go and explain the situation and this process to the town manager and to Mr. Waters and see if we can get that put back to the 20th. And I know they don't like to do Monty Tech and us on the same night. It is a long night. I know. We've sat through that before. But that may be what has to be done in this case. Yes.
There were two things that I didn't know what they were and I was researching as people were talking. The BS, uh.
BCBAs?
BCBAs and the Wilson reading method. I don't know if any, like, if I'm the only person that doesn't.
No, but people who are listening may not know. We have a fair amount of people online this evening.
So the, the BCBAs, are they, um, do they have a teaching certificate or do they have a behavioral health certificate?
They're licensed by the state.
Behavior.
As behavior.
BCBAs.
And they're non, it's a non-teaching role?
They are in the teacher contract.
Okay, okay. And then the Wilson reading method is a reading teacher that teaches using a specific?
She's a special education teacher.
Yeah, specific method.
And we have one Wilson reading teacher in the district?
Two.
One. We have more than one trained, but we have one in this dedicated role at Turkey Hill Elementary School.
Okay, okay.
What are the other trained ones do? Are they in classrooms?
Uh, inclusion teacher. Um, and a general ed teacher.
Okay.
All right. I just didn't know what their positions did and if I was having to make a decision on what to cut, it seems unfair not to know what they did.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, the Wilson position, I think at this point is servicing seven?
Eight.
Eight students total.
Okay.
So do we decide on the next meeting day? It's next week?
It's next week.
Okay.
All right, so then it would be, unless anybody else has anything, time for public comment.
Oh boy.
So if anyone online wishes to make a public comment, we're happy to have you do that. Please raise your hand using the Zoom method, or if someone here wants to make a public comment, you're welcome to as well. Don't, we're not twisting around. Are there any public comments from the public? We are not seeing any online, but if you're waving your hand or you don't know how to use the raise your hand, because I used to be like that, um, just sing out. Nobody's singing, so I think people are processing. I hope that people will, um, take the opportunity to use the lps@lunenburgschools.net to, um, address any questions they may have to the superintendent. You can, of course, always email me, Spelling that is tricky. You may want to go online just to double check. And I will pass your questions along or answer anything that I can answer. But this is uncharted waters and we're, we're treading at the moment.
Just keep swimming.
That's right. Keep your head above water.
When's the last time we had to do budget cuts of this magnitude?
Of this magnitude? I can't remember of this magnitude. And my husband started teaching here in 1988?
2012.
We had to.
2012, of this magnitude?
That's when you lost a curriculum director at that time.
2008, 1012.
Wow. I didn't remember it being this deep at that time. So, not a good thing. Not a good thing at all. So, um.
Motion to adjourn?
There we go. Yeah, that's where we are.
I'll second.
And we need a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Prozowski?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Biermark?
Yes.
Mr. Schoolbreen?
Yes.
And Mrs. Arshambo?
Yes. Thank you very much, everybody.